I'm calling the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the time to extend an invitation for any citizens present to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there anyone here that wants to put something on the agenda that's not already on there? And the record should show that there is no one. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or subtractions from the agenda? Would we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. On our consent agenda today, we have approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personnel action notices, and approval of the Human Services report. Anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
I don't want to remove anything, but I want to add something. This morning, I placed another personnel action notice on your desks. So, for Brianna Palamaki, did I say that correctly? That's all.
And the reason that we're doing that is she's now passed the bar and she's ready to go to work, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we'll put that on, add that to the consent agenda. Anybody else have any additions or subtractions from the consent agenda? Would we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
And we'll do a roll call vote for that.
Johnson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to routine business. Approval of claims. Anybody have any questions on claims? We'll do a roll call vote.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Claims are approved. Department head reports. Sonia, would you like to go first?
Good morning. I submitted some information to you, so you might have had an opportunity to go through that since you received it. A few things that I was going to add before I ask if you have any questions of that. I would like to add that with our National 4-H Week celebration, that occurs October 7th through the 13th, which has a theme of Inspire Kids to Do, you will see 4-H represented in the Hobo Day Parade again. The "Together in the Tradition," thought it was actually kind of a fitting Hobo Day tagline for 4-H in South Dakota because of the tradition that it has not only here but across the United States and on the last day of National 4-H Week. I did forget to include that, our SDSU Extension Annual Conference will be held in Brookings the last week of October, starting the 22nd. And that now with the school year back in session and the programming, in-school programming and such, starting up again, I have returned to the Hutterite Colonies and actually have been asked to come to a third. So, looking at some possibilities of partnering with that, that school and those classrooms as well. What questions might you have of me of all of this summer information? I'm kind of wiping my forehead of relief that we made it through and had a really successful summer. Glad to see that, I'm glad to see all of those events having come to an end, but yet they're always a lot of fun to be involved in and it just indicates that we're into a start of a new 4-H year.
On your report that you submitted, if it doesn't say that there was somewhere else, something say like SwifTeL Center or whatever, was everything else that, unless it says something else, it was done at the BCOAC?
I think so. We held our special foods contest at the Sioux Valley Fax Room. And, yeah, everything else besides our Achievement Days and Horse Show were at the BCOAC. We did have to postpone, kind of crazy that you'd consider postponing in July because of weather, right? But we had to postpone our public presentation contest after that significant rainfall because we didn't really have any good place for those participants to park. So we included that with our Achievement Days and actually are considering that as a youth in action component to our event in the future. But, yeah, otherwise, I believe everything did take place at the BCOAC.
And the cloverbud, the one I was interested in is the Cloverbud Day Camp. That was out there and when you talked about the insect stuff and all that, were you guys out in the nature park then?
We did go through the nature park. Each one of our participants had like a bug jar and there are places in the nature park that are not fit for somebody my age to walk up. Walking up isn't so bad, it's coming back down. Some of those little trails are very steep, but didn't seem to bother them and they had a good time walking and just that kind of initial loop around that first pond.
Lovely, that's really nice. Anybody else have any questions on the report that you submitted?
Not on the report itself, but I liked the format at the SwifTeL Center for Achievement Days with all the exhibits being inside. I think that was a tremendous change for the event and I appreciated it.
We had a lot of positive feedback about that and I will tell you that our setup went super slick. Perkins came, backed right into the SwifTeL Center. Of course Dustin and Scott at the SwifTeL Center are always great friends to have on your side when you're looking to do something like that as they pulled in the forklift, unloaded everything that needed forklift assistance. We got things off that trailer and I was pleased that it came off clean. There was people throughout the year and we talked in Extension Board meetings about how there's moisture and some condensation and different things that can happen in those trailers and what we might see when we got them out, you know, some buildup of sorts. But we didn't have anything, nothing came out damaged. Not that I expected it to be damaged during transit or anything, but just those changing temperatures, if they would have had any effect. And likewise, we had that trailer donated to us from Jeff Gulickson and Farmers Implement and Irrigation for holding our Achievement Day stuff afterwards. It's full from front to back and it's longer than the one we had, but it actually houses some things other than just what we had in the SwifTeL Center to display those exhibits. It's got some rabbit cages and poultry cages maybe and the scale for the small animals. So, it's full, but thank you Commissioner Bartley because I too think that the space looked really wonderful and it was a new, it was new for us, but I think it looked really nice and there was people. Our Companion Animal Show started that Tuesday morning and then we had our public presentation contest. So even though those exhibits weren't identified on the schedule as open to the public, there was a lot of people mulling and milling through that space to see what was on display as they waited for their children or as their kids were done doing what have you. They were just enjoying the opportunity to see what 4-H had on display. So it worked really well.
Madam Chair, I too really liked the way that that looked and the ease in which you could go through and look at your exhibits, it was really nice. I also really like your report.
Oh, thank you.
This is awesome. It is a lot of good information for us and you've done it in a very easy format to read and to understand and I'm thrilled that you're doing possibly a third colony. That's outstanding. Good job.
Phone call that I got last week, so.
Good, thank you.
The, on Achievement Days, the number of animals that were there, and I liked the count, that was, I don't think we've, I haven't, don't remember seeing that before, is that comparable to the number of animals that we have had in the past for Achievement Days?
I actually think those numbers are up a little bit.
Great.
Especially, well, they're probably about the same as far as a lump sum. We had a few less poultry this year, but we had more beef exhibits, we had more swine exhibits, and we had more companion animal exhibits. Our rabbit numbers stay pretty consistent, so those numbers haven't necessarily declined. I would say if anything, they're up. Numbers are higher in some of the different project areas.
Anybody else have any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Kristen. We'll just stay out at the BCOAC.
How are you guys this morning? Long time no see for one of you.
Yep.
So we had our board meeting last night, so Larry's gonna say, hey, I've heard all this before. So we have done a few changes to the way the archery range is for security purposes. We've worked with Safe and Secure and added a couple new cameras in the locker area to make sure that all the corners can be seen now. One of the challenges we had is the camera system that we had installed before had dummy cameras, so they were there and they had a blinking light when the battery was installed, but they didn't actually record anything. So we did add some new security protocols into that area. One of the other things we're still working on is the drop-down fire doors in the archery range and we're working with Klyte's Electric on that and another project. GFMP, I'm sure you guys are aware, we have a grant program with them for our range reimbursement. One of the kind of cool things is, is we can submit our utilities for the firearms range. One of the hardships is determining how much power consumption our firearms range has. But there's a neat little thing that BMU and Klyte's Electric can install and actually read how much power our firearms range has. And so instead of just basing it off square footage, which our firearms range compared to the entire building is a small square footage, we can actually read the amount of power which we know is going to be definitely more than the square footage. So we're working right now and then we'll be able to submit those bills and be reimbursed by GFMP at our, at our standard grant rate. So we do have a couple of things along those lines. We are still working with Train to reevaluate the system and it's been determined to bring in a third-party consultant to kind of look at the useful life of the system and see if there's a direction or maybe some retrofits that need to happen to make that system not a money pit. Let's just kind of call it what it is and see if there's anything that needs to happen there. So we are working a couple of directions that way. We have also been talking to the engineers and installers who put in our backstop to increase the amount of rubber back to factory specs to make sure that we are being able to handle anything in the firearms range that people bring in to us. Couple of new things, archery tags did show up to the facility and we are putting in our marketing plan to release that to the public October 4th. We already have some people who are just extremely excited to, to see this and they're gearing to go. So that's kind of one of the, the new pieces. We added six new range safety officers to the firearms range. They have already been on the range and are fantastic additions. We have another RSO class that'll happen at the end of October and we already have seven people signed up. I checked those numbers after last night. So we definitely have some, some new interest and some new enthusiasm on that gun range. Couple of different things, I did the SD facilitator class and so now I'm certified to do the Harvest SD, which is teaching novice hunters to actually go out, scout, then kind of go back into the field, actually harvest ethically animals and then we actually process and cook right there on-site at the BCOAC. So kind of teaching people that, you know, game animals don't have to taste like game animals, there's something more that you'd be able to do with them. So hopefully gonna integrate that into the future. JOAT has started, SDSU has a PE class that is going on out there. We're working on intermurals that'll start in the spring. Again, we're kind of looking forward, we're doing a chamber mixer in January. We're going to be doing the SDSU Family Weekend here in October. We're also gonna start doing Open Sundays, so one Sunday a month, we're gonna open to the public, let anyone come in, kind of, we're calling it Free Range Sunday. One of my staff decided to use chickens in the ads, so actually I think it's a cute little pun, but it's definitely kind of been an eye-opener and catcher so far. But we will have one day, we're open to the public right now, just to increase that foot traffic on a Sunday and, you know, get more people excited about what we have. Let's see, a little bit more, we have, in the last two weeks, we started counting the number of new memberships, so I can kind of report that back to you guys every two weeks. So the last two weeks, we increased our membership by 21 and I'll start maybe submitting a report that breaks that down. So we had 20 new, 21 new memberships sold in the last two weeks and in the last two weeks, we sold 41 day passes to the facility. So definitely getting that traffic in there. Any questions on that brief little overview there?
Day passes, where, is that in the gun range mostly or is that archery range starting to pick up?
It's a 50/50, I would say. The really popular piece has been the sighting in because of hunting season, duck opener. This weekend, we actually saw a lot of people coming in and sighting in rifles in the last, I would say probably 10 days. Right before archery opener, September 1st, we saw a lot of people coming in, getting, you know, maybe they haven't picked up their bow in three months, but they wanted to make sure that everything was dialed in.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Steve, would you like to be next? Mike?
Good morning. I just got back from a training, I guess, last week. I was going to the enlisted association and it was a very good time there. And may I come here to introduce my new assistant, Eileen Aberley. She had been with the State Veterans Affairs Office for a while and she'd been in Sioux Falls for the last three years and now she's coming on board with us, so feel pretty confident in her being able to pick up a lot of the stuff fairly quickly. And like I, she doesn't have a lot of experience in the welfare side of it, but we'll work on it.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your coming. Chris, would you like to go next? We have a nine o'clock that's gonna take a half hour.
Mine's very short. I don't have a lot. Just to let you know, we did complete our commercial apartment review and still compiling all of that data. There's a lot of them, there's like 272 apartments in the county. So it's a big, it's a massive spreadsheet to input all the data that we got when we were able to get it. We've got a lot of properties that we didn't get. The lake review is completed and the guys are finishing up all their paperwork and documentation on anything they discovered or found to list. They've started on their building permits, which is nice because the list keeps growing. So they've been out and about looking at construction that wasn't completed last year as well as some of the new permits that were started this year, the decks, things like that that were taken out in March, they can get those done and wrapped up. So we should be well ahead of the game this year. Jacob, Reed and I just were at school last week. We were there all week out in Spearfish. School went very well. Larry and Jerry did not attend school this year. Larry is actually at the end of his, he's gonna recertify in November, so he's got another five years to, before he has to do his three courses, his three conferences, his three workshops and that, so I don't know if he's gonna go to anything. He's, he's at his retirement date, so he can basically ride his time out if he chose. So Jerry has one more school to take for his recertification, he will have to take one next year, he opted not to go this year. Reed is moving on his way, he's done, in his first two years, he's got his two courses, so he's got one more to do and he's got three, three years to do it, so we're progressing right along. I think that's about it. Just wanted to let you know, we went to school, it went good and I just got a survey this morning on it. I think the school next year, they're looking at moving it back central. They, they moved it, we always used to go to Pier because it was central for everybody and then they decided to do it in Sioux Falls a couple of years ago. Since they went East River, then they wanted to go West River, so it's quite a drive to go out there for the week, but went well, so.
Anybody have any questions for Chris? Thank you.
Oh, one other thing before I forget. I put in my budget request this year, I forgot about that. Put in to look at getting the Distro laser measures for the next budget year. I ordered one of them, it came while I was at school. When I came back on Friday, I gave it to Larry, he's been out on Friday and yesterday and we were testing it out a little bit. The accuracy seems to be pretty good. Pythagoras on it, found out you gotta be pretty stable to be able to stand back from a building, shoot an end, shoot a middle, shoot an end and it'll calculate and tell you your distance. That part might not be as accurate as what I would like it to be because of shakiness and trying to, trying to hold it steady while you hit the button. But interior measurements, we've measured all around the office, different spots and it is spot on. It's, it's actually pretty incredible. So I don't know the full value of it and I've got, the guys are gonna be alternating between them to try it all out for everybody and if they decide it's something that they think they can use and benefit from, then I will order one more for them or whoever and if somebody says, I don't think it's for me, tape measure's just fine, then we'll hold off because it, they're about 450 bucks a piece, so. But they do come with a two and three-year warranty once I register them, so accuracy I'm impressed with, but we'll see, we'll see what they think their need is, so.
Thank you. Bob, would you like to go next?
Good morning. We had several meetings, but since the time is short, we, we had our emergency management conferences that me and the deputy director went to. We had a pod meeting during the last time. September 14th, we had our National Preparedness Day in Brookings County and since we're in the hallway, when a lot of people go get license plates, we get a lot of people, so that went well. We had Commissioner Miller stop by. I don't know if any other commissioners stopped by, I didn't stay down there all four hours, but I do know Commissioner Miller stopped by. I was scheduled to go to FEMA training, September 16th to 21st. That was canceled due to the Hurricane Florence. That will hopefully be rescheduled and I'll keep you informed on that one. September 22nd, the Saturday, all three of us. My office went down through Yankton County. They had a full-scale pipeline mortality incident and then we also held our second tabletop exercise. So I did the tabletop exercise to meet the Pipeline Technical Assistance Grant and Richard and Ray Lynn went out and assisted with the full-scale exercise with Yankton County. And that was a good event. Then we came back in yesterday, we had our full-scale Emergency Operations Center exercise. We took our EOC up to Bruce, set it up at the County Highway Shop and we was able to run self-sufficiently with the help of the Commission Department. We had Wi-Fi, we, we made contact through the internet. It was mainly an internet type thing, not a radio test on this particular one. We had good cell coverage, everything with that hotspot, so that was a very successful and Commissioner Pierce visited us out there during that exercise. Later today, we have an ISO Building Code Effectiveness Meeting and even though you may not realize what the ISO Building Code Effectiveness Meeting is, this is what helps our insurance ratings on a, on a yearly basis. So we're diligently going through documenting, basically what the ISO, it's similar to the fire code ratings when they come to a community and tell you what, what rating you've got. So we'll, we'll take this one serious, we're documenting everything that we do. The 26th, we got a joint jurisdiction meeting and the 26th, we also have a pre-disaster mitigation kickoff meeting. That happens to be at noon. And I did want to check with you, the, the first district's got the main contract, help us with our pre-disaster mitigation and they asked me if we could provide a lunch meal at that particular meeting and at the other PDM meetings coming up because otherwise we just don't get anybody coming to the meetings. And I just wanted to get your thoughts.
How many people will be at the meetings, do you think?
If I don't have food, three.
But if you have food, how many?
If I have food, probably 10. Those are, those are approximate, obviously, but.
I'm fine with that. Everybody else?
It's not an overly big expense, but I feel you need to, you need, I need guidance, so. Okay, we'll, we'll work on that one and, and last but not least, almost, Joint Jurisdiction Board, Joint Powers Board met. In the basement of this building now is the official City of Brookings Storm, the severe weather shelter. There will be some additional actions having to be taken and I'll, I'm working with the fire chief on some stuff. The city manager's gonna be working with the county commission assistant and it will be interesting. And October 16th, we will be getting a word from the National Weather Service, our storm-ready presentation will be done on October 16th. We're already on the internet as a storm-ready community. Any questions?
Just to comment, the exercise in Bruce yesterday was very interesting and, and everything went very smooth from what I could see. I did ask Bob, so at one point, Richard had a sample resolution that the commission would have to pass to assist Bruce in, you know, obtaining the water, which is what the issue was for the exercise. But Bob, I think, agreed to come back at a later meeting because this was yesterday and talk to us a little bit about the process, because I don't understand the process, on how we handle our end of that. I know we're not there, but do we, if we pass an emergency resolution, what are our notice requirements? How do we do that? Should we have some type of form that we already have developed so that Stacy'd just be able to plug it in and be ready to go if we need it? So he's going to come back at another meeting and talk to us about how we handle that when, when something comes up where, where there's an emergency and some money needs to be put in place or some other type of assistance from the county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff, do you have a long? Okay. Then, I don't see that we've got anybody here from Drug Court. Okay, why don't you just have them come on in? I think we could go ahead.
Yeah, all Darren got too many.
So welcome, everybody. We're going to have a scheduled agenda item now on a Drug Court presentation and before we start, would everybody introduce themselves for the listening public so they know who we have talking? And welcome to all of you today.
I'm Magistrate Judge Abigail Howard and I'm the judge for the Drug Court team in Brookings.
I'm Jared Gass, I'm the defense attorney on the Drug Court team.
Terry Nesbitt, prosecutor for the Drug Court team.
Kisa Up, I'm the probation officer.
Darren DeYoung, I'm the deputy with the sheriff's office on the Drug Court team.
Thank you.
And we also have treatment members who couldn't make it today and our Drug Court coordinator and also Lieutenant Powers from the PD. So you got us. So basically, we just wanted to talk, we had started back in May, that we wanted to hit every service organization that we could and it's September and we're almost done. But we were lucky enough to get to the city council as well a couple of weeks ago and so we just wanted to let everybody know Drug Court, where are we at right now? And so as you know, drug abuse affects many facets of society, the family, the community, health, environment, crime, and the economy. And Drug Court has fast-track action. So basically, I see a case, I see an end. So basically, I see a case, I see an individual that I think Drug Court could benefit from. I contact a defense attorney, and we can get this case resolved in a fast and efficient manner. Sometimes, defense attorneys will say, hey, I think this person could use Drug Court. And as long as they meet our criteria of living in the county and being high-risk, high-need, we can get them in the program and not have the lapse that you all know takes place in normal criminal cases. So that's kind of the fast-track action that we do from the screen by me down to getting them into Drug Court, and we try to sentence them on a Tuesday so they can start on a Thursday. It's that fast. So the eligibility, basically, they're not on parole, they have to be 18 or over, has to be voluntary. A lot of people we asked to be on the Drug Court team, the council, defense council asks, they don't want to do it, because it's a lot of work. They'd rather go to the penitentiary. Must have less than seven lifetime DUIs, high-risk, high-needs. Excludes present convictions for distribution. And also, you cannot be a registered sex offender and be in Drug Court. And that's our mission statement. So to graduate, you have to complete Phase Five, pay all your fees on your current file, 90 days of continuous sobriety. We have not had an issue with that, we're very lucky as far as when people get to that Phase Three and on. Must be employed, have to have acceptable housing, in program for at least 18 months. And we have, what we think really benefits this program is we do have a team approach, we have probation. We have the chemical dependency and mental health counselors. We have me. They have Jared, who dressed up today. They have law enforcement. And they have Magistrate Howard, and she does a weekly team update. So if you've ever been to Drug Court on a Thursday morning, she speaks to them individually, and they give us a checklist of what they've done every single week. But every Thursday, we have a staffing before Drug Court, and we go through each participant to see what is going on in their lives, what can we help with, what needs to be changed. And then Judge Howard has to tell them, we get to sit back, but she gets to tell them, this has to change, this has to change. And if they don't change, they're gonna get a sanction or they ultimately could be terminated from the program. Our mantra is, show up, be honest, and try. And if you're not gonna do those three things, you're not gonna be successful in the Drug Court program. We've had six graduates, and we have had no recidivism on these six graduates. We're in contact with them still, I get texts from one of them all the time, and they're part of our family. They're supportive of our current participants, and it's really beneficial to see them thrive in the community, in their jobs, and a lot of them have had babies. So it's really exciting to see drug-free babies in the county. But as we mentioned, this is a decreased cost to the county because there's less incarceration days, there's a decreased court expense, and in the end, we get tax-paying, successful citizens. And that's our update, we have 13 participants, six graduates, six terminations. And as you can see, the drug of choice, 57% methamphetamine. So that is predominantly the drug of choice in Brookings County right now. Current participants, 28 children statewide. No, that's ours, that's ours. And just so you know, no state funds are used for any of the incentives. Everything we get from, we get for our incentives, we go, Darren goes door-to-door to get things from McDonald's and all the businesses. Some of our participants will go door-to-door, but our incentives that we give them, if it's a Culver Shake, none of that comes from any of the funds that were allocated. So when an addict rises out of the addiction and crime, we all rise. And I think that's very true if you see any of our participants, and you may have seen at some of the community groups, our graduates speak, and it's, it's really neat to just see what a change in their life it has been. Or if you've gone to a graduation, it's, it's life-changing. And to break the cycle, you have to change your life. You can't just stop doing drugs and expect that's gonna just, cold turkey is gonna work. We have found that this process, it works, and we're very lucky to have this in Brookings County.
I think one of the reasons we wanted to come around this time, too, was we presented to a lot of groups in 2016 when this program was implemented, and it's been approximately two years now that things have been underway. So we just wanted to revisit with a lot of the community groups, with the city and the county, let them know where we're at. Just let everyone know, we appreciate all the support that we've received. We certainly could not do this program without a prosecutor and law enforcement that are committed to it. So we appreciate the county letting us have Darren and Terry on the team. We are pretty much right on par with where we wanted to be with the team. We could probably max out at about 20 participants per year. So we're right in that range where we could take in a few more, but it really depends on what stage they're each at. We have five phases, and when you have a bunch of brand-new Phase Ones that come in, they take significantly more work as opposed to when we've, we're progressing our people through Phase Four, Phase Five, they're getting ready to graduate, they take less work. So we're always looking at better ways to expand our target population. This year, I think we visited with the defense bar again or found ways that we could reach out to just the different agencies in town that might have people in mind. They obviously have to have criminal charges pending, but there might be someone that you just haven't thought of as a typical Drug Court participant that may be eligible. So really, I think we're making good progress. Something Keesa always says, too, is quality over quantity. We don't want to overdo it and not provide the services we need, and I think it's a true testament to how successful this team has been, that we have had a zero recidivism rate, that no one, knock on wood, probably bite my tongue, but so far, that that's gone really well. And that those people have been committed to continuing the support of the team, that they've continued to support our current participants, that they've taken roles as mentors or sponsors for current participants, so. I just couldn't be more proud of this team and where it's come. It's a very moving experience to come watch some of this. I know some of you have been able to come to a graduation or come to a court session. If you haven't, I strongly encourage you to do so. We'll have our next graduation probably the end of November, early December. We'll certainly send out notices at that time. And hear from the people themselves, hear from the people that are working through their recovery journey and what the program has meant to them. But we definitely appreciate the support of the county, appreciate the support of the sheriff's office and the jail and everything they have done to help us, they are instrumental, especially with the drug testing that we do. I don't know if anybody else wants to share anything? Do you have any questions for any of the team members?
I'll say, I'll say a few words from, since Terry wants me to. From a defense attorney standpoint, and I would just reiterate that the program is working. I know when, when Abby was the state's attorney, you know, about, it was about two years ago, and she initially asked me to be on the Drug Court, I didn't know what it was, I had no idea. You know, so out of naivete, I said yes. But it's, it's really interesting, because as a defense attorney, you know, of course, I see a lot of clients with drug prob, drug and alcohol is 95% of the problem. I mean, take that out of the picture and you wouldn't have a lot of these crimes being committed. So it's interesting from my perspective to see a different side of the criminal justice system, and it really has worked. And I know the participants that come in, a lot of them comment as well. They say, you know, this is completely different than anything we've ever seen in the criminal justice system. They're used to coming in, getting a defense attorney, going in front of the prosecutor, going in front of the judge, getting their sentence and moving on. And a lot of times, that, that includes treatment, but the thing with Drug Court is, it's, it's more than just treatment. It's, it's really, you know, it's a, as Terry mentioned, it's difficult, because it is more than just treatment. It's, it's really getting them to accept personal responsibility for their life. And by the time that these people get to, you know, Phase Five, the people that are graduating, being sober is almost an afterthought to them. I mean, it, it's there, I mean, they want to be sober, but they are living their life and they are productive members of society. And I think that's, to me, that's the most interesting aspect of this, is that it's, it's more than treatment. It really is just changing lives, and we've had people succeed that when they first came in, all of us on the Drug Court team said, wow, good luck with this one. You know, because you get a feel for these people and, and they surprise us. And then there's others that, you know, we think, yeah, they could probably do this, and they don't. I mean, it really, it comes down to their, their willingness to accept personal responsibility, and the ones that do that succeed. And the program is working, and so it's definitely good for Brookings County with the increased drugs that are continuously coming into the county. You know, this program is definitely needed, and, and it will just, and it's still in its infancy, that's the other thing. I mean, we are, we are an infant Drug Court, and it will continue to, to grow and to expand, and, and so, yeah, it's good for Brookings County.
And not that the money should matter, but just as a point of reference for you, and don't quote me, I think these are the latest numbers, but an average individual that would spend a year in the South Dakota Penitentiary costs a taxpayer approximately $25,000. A year in our program costs approximately $8,000, so. And we've seen that with our drug and alcohol offenders, going to the penitentiary is punitive, but it does not necessarily resolve the underlying addiction. So not only is it fiscally responsible, but it is something that's working, definitely here in Brookings.
Keesa's the bad guy, so she doesn't want to say anything, I guess.
I, I have a cold, if I start coughing.
I, I would just reiterate what Jared said, it's really fun to see these people, they come talk to you, the participants after court, and court becomes a healing process, where before, it used to be a place they didn't want to go. And when we have graduations, and every Thursday, when we have the clapping and the, everyone, supporting everyone, it, it changes what participants view the court system as. So I think that's a real big benefit. He talks more than staff.
We don't want to get him started, okay, well, so do I. My question is, you talked about the five phases, could you give me the short answer of what those five are? One through five?
She just had a, she just turned 40.
Yeah. Our Phase One is where it's about stabilization, getting them stable. A lot of them come with, come to us, and they may not have a house, they may not have a place to live, and getting them to treatment, basically just getting them sober. And you're gonna be in that, that for 90, for 60 days. And then we got Phase Two, which we, hopefully will get more, a little more intense with what we expect of you, wherever you start looking for a job, because we want you to be busy 30 to 40 hours a week. We find that community service they give gives them the realizing that, hey, if I had a job, I wouldn't have to do community service, so it gives them that incentive to go out and get, get that. So that's about another 60 days, then you get a 10 o'clock curfew. We also have where people can't eat anywhere, and that serves alcohol until Phase Three. So for them, when we get to Phase Three, which is 120 days, they get really excited because they get to go to Gwads and a few of those places, that's usually where they go right after court, if they can eat out, so. With the treatment, they'll do a SABISA, which is a cognitive behavior substance abuse treatment that we do. We also do the MRT treatment, works with their criminal thinking that they need to work on. And treatment is spread out throughout the whole phases, so it may be more intense in Phase One, Two, and Three than it would be in Four and Five. One thing that they have to do in Phase One, Two, and Three is they have to text me everywhere they go. And I will check up to them where they are at those places to gain a little trust with me. Because one thing they are very good at is lying, manipulating, and they're con artists, that's what they do. So I check up on where they're at, what they do. We have a young lady right now that's studying for her GED, so that's one of our goals for her. If we can help them get their education, we will, but it also depends on how motivated they are. So when we go to Phase Four, it's another 120 days. We have a midnight curfew, you may only see me every other week, you no longer have to text me where you go. The idea of Phase Four and Five is to kind of wean them off of having supervision. Because I don't want them to, when we get to Phase Five, and then all of a sudden, we graduate, and they don't know how to function. So they only see me every other week on Phase Four. But doesn't mean that I don't do curfew checks, home checks, to make sure they're doing what they need to do. If we do think that they are using or something like that, we will search their house, they go to UAs. It's a color system, the color system on the UAs is very intense in the beginning, but slowly, we'll kind of wean you off of that, because you can't rely on those UAs to stay sober when you're not in Drug Court. So maybe when you're in Phase Five, you may only have two UAs the whole month. So, but we want to continually to wean you off things when you're in Phase Five. Because my Phase Five, I have two Phase Five riders now, right now, and I see them once a month. And, but they still, they're so used to checking in with me, I still hear from them about once a week. But when they do graduate, some of them keep in touch with me, but I do invite them all to the graduations and check in here and there with them every once in a while to see if they need something or if they need help with something or questions or whatever, or where to find services. But with the whole five phases, it's probably about anywhere from 15 to 18 months, depending on sanctions and incentives that they get, so.
The six graduates that, that you've had so far, what percentage of them would be meth users?
Probably 75%, I would say.
So the program is working for meth addicts, then? Oh, it is. Excellent.
Madam Chair. I would just like to say that you make us proud. I bragged about Judge, about Drug Court at our county convention a couple of weeks ago. And very few counties have this, this wonderful thing. And I am so proud that you, Abby, I think you kind of led the charge, and Terry, that you picked it up, and all of you for what you do. And so it, in my opinion, gave us bragging rights. And one more reason that Brookings County is a great place to live is that we can rehabilitate meth users in particular, but all of the people who have, who are addicted. And so, thank you.
Just one other question, you, it's at a minimum of age of 18. Can you give me a range of ages of the participants, and then maybe a breakdown of the terminated age range? Is it younger, is it older, Andy? If it takes a sidebar to figure this out, that's fine.
The terminations were younger individuals.
Always younger, as a rule, okay.
Yeah, and we have a few, one of our graduates was almost a lifetime user, 50s. One of our participants is a lifetime user.
The oldest we've had is 55, the youngest
55, wow.
The ones that have been terminated, they have been five, five of them have been under 24, and one has been 32.
Yeah, you know, when I think of Drug Court, when I first heard of Drug Court, I thought of it's the high school thing, where the peers, a judge have been helping them out, and this obviously is not that. And so it was the interesting age part of it, it's still the younger people that we're having a difficult time reaching in the short term, so to speak, and I don't know that Drug Court can do anything about that with extra work in those particular age groups or not, but those are the ones that I see progressing and not getting help, hopefully staying out of court, but at the same time, not getting the help they need. But is there anything in, in the program that addresses the youth, those people under 25 or 24?
The fact is, is like Jared mentioned, you have to take responsibility for your actions, and you have to want to try. And a lot of the terminations we have weren't for using, they were just for not willing to stop people, places, and things. And they weren't willing, willing to give up their drug yet, or give up their friend circle, or change their life. And that's just a maturity thing. We try to combat that with their mental health and training, but some of it, it has to, it has to be you. I mean, this is your program, we can't work harder than they do.
I think something else that we've seen that's pretty common is that in our older participants, maybe someone with a family, they have something to work towards. They know, they have a tangible thing in their life that they can lose because of their addiction. And when you're young enough that you just, maybe you don't have a family yet, you don't have a, a home or a job you've held for years, you haven't felt that loss, you maybe haven't hit rock bottom yet. So they don't feel it as strongly as someone that has, has those assets in their life, has those things built up, maybe has been to prison before, knows what that feels like. So I would say that's pretty common among the people that have been terminated, is they just, they haven't felt that loss yet, they haven't had something big enough that's big enough to overcome their addiction.
And as a surprise, I expected your termination numbers to be larger, so I congratulate you on that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, we appreciate your coming.
And we just wanted to thank, we have amazing NA and AA community, and the Department of Labor has been great. So I just wanted to give them a shout out. We have some members who hit 16 AAs or NAs a week. So we have a great program and support system in Brookings and the county, so I just wanted to give them a shout out, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty, would you like to go next? Marty, would you like to go next?
That's under eighteen, yeah.
Good morning. I just have to give you a quick tidbit on drug court. Is, one of the individuals that's in drug court right now, when he left, when this person left jail, I looked at him in the eyes and I says, "You're not going to make it. You'll never make it through drug court." And I says, "If you do, I'll buy you a steak." Well, he's moved up to where he's got his ankle bracelet off. And I saw him walking out of jail, and he says, "Hey, I'm not got my, I don't have my ankle bracelet anymore." And I says, "Good. You know, if you make it, I'm going to buy you those Nick's hamburgers." And he goes, "No, you said steak, and I'm going to eat it, too." So, anyway, so, so far, he's proven me wrong. So, drug court, this individual, I'd never, I was, when he was going to get on there, I go, "Ah, I don't know why you're doing this," but so far, it's, it's working so. Anyway, as far as our jail numbers, did this report yesterday, and we had twenty-three, but three came in last night, so we have twenty-six. And anytime, I always said, anytime we're under thirty, it's, it's a manageable group in the jail and so forth. The ones that are in jail need to be in jail. They, they need to be there. And most of them have something to do with drug or alcohol, or it created a violent, either aggravated assault or a domestic assault or something like that. So, they need to be there. Bart, the jail administrator, just received training. He's now able to train others on mental illness first aid. And he'll be, his first training session will be all my correctional, new correctional officers and deputies that have not received any training yet, basically, on, on mental health or mental illness. He'll train those. But he also can, can do, he can gear it towards anybody in the public, too, towards teachers, or nurses, or, or whatever. And so, that's going to be an asset. I want them to train in Brookings right now, and then we can maybe offer it to other agencies and have other law enforcement, Moody County, Lake County, and, and so forth. And then, and then with State's Attorney Terry taking the lead on CIT training, which is a, which is a forty-hour training, we'll be able to, once that's, that's, that keeps rolling, and, and, we'll have that training available, too. So, we're making a lot of headway when it comes to mental illness, as far as training and trying to recognize that and, and so forth. The other thing is, now, I probably, I didn't want to, I didn't want to go right away in case you guys want to yell at me. But anyway, I got to apologize to you. I did to you what my staff does to me once in a while, and I get mad, is, is being in the public, and they ask me something that happened, and I don't know anything about it. And Commissioner Jensen got, was out in the cornfield and got about the deputy, I had a deputy that got into a traffic accident in Volga. And, and it's our fault. And the cars, insurance last week told me that our patrol car is totaled. So, I have to wait for the payout on the car, which I think it's, it's the pickup. And I think it's, it's $21,000 for the, for the pickup that they're going to give us. But a thousand dollars is deductible. So, but I'm short a patrol car. I've been trying to research with federal surplus to try to find a used one. They have a couple of used ones, but it's high mileage and so forth. So, it, it, we, we struggle when we're down a patrol car, because I have deputies in Aurora, and I have deputies that live in Volga. And, and for response time, if I have an emergency, I got eight deputies that can get in their cars and so forth. So, but first of all, I apologize that, and I was surrendering to Commissioner Miller on the way in, and she says, "Well, you did lean over and tell us." She knew about it, so it's, some of you might not have known about it. But anyway, it was in Volga, he stopped at a stop sign, pulled back out, and there was a young girl driving, and, and so forth. There was not a, normally, you'd get this on a media release, but the Highway Patrol took the accident. So, we didn't put out a media release, because the Highway Patrol, I don't do media releases for the Highway Patrol, so that's part of that. I guess in the long run, what I'm looking for is maybe the possibility that if I can, I have some car dealerships looking to see if there's any eighteen, twenty-eighteen patrol cars sitting anywhere that, that isn't sold. And I was wondering, just to put it in your memories here, is if it's a possibility, if I can find a new car in twenty-eighteen, and if there would be money in the contingency, around $12,000 to add to the $20,000 that, for this patrol car payout, if that'd be a possibility. If you remember, next year, I did ask for a third patrol car, but you backed that off so that I could get the cameras in, and I appreciate that. But I'm thinking, maybe trying to find a used patrol car with eighty thousand miles on it, is it, is it worth doing that, or is it, try to find a new one, or I try to limp along until the New Year, and, and, and then order another one at that time, too. So, I guess I just kind of throw that out at this, at this time. But right now, I'm trying to search for a patrol car that I could replace. But could that be a possibility of a contingency around $12,000 to get a new car based on trying to find a used car?
Well, it's good timing, because we just discovered that we're going to have a little more money in our budget than we thought we were because of our insurance premiums. So, you know, I, I, I can understand that it's a problem for you to not, to be down a car. So, yeah, I think you better, in my opinion, you better be looking, but I can't speak for the whole board.
I guess in my opinion, I'd rather see a new car than a used car with a lot of miles on it, so. Marty, was a new car in your budget for next year?
Well, I have, I have two new cars for next year. But he wasn't going to be replaced. He had eighty-nine thousand miles on, on his vehicle, so it wasn't going to be replaced until the following year.
So, either way, it would be three cars.
Yeah.
So, it would be new, two next year, and one off.
Yeah. I asked for three. We, you guys, the commission backed that off to two, so I could get money for, for our in-car cameras, which I do need, too. So, I would be able to get that third one. I'm not, I don't like it this way with an accident, but at, around that $10,000 or $12,000, if I can find one somewhere, that could be sitting on a lot somewhere that, you know, that agency didn't buy, or whatever. Every once in a while, I hear that, where there's one sitting somewhere.
But all your equipment's transferable from one car to the other? Was no damage to the equipment itself?
Yeah. And the insurance will cover taking the radios out and putting them back in, and those decals.
Right. Because if you took this car out to its end, it would be worth equivalent less than the $21,000 you got from insurance. So, it looks to me like we're, we're staffing the three new cars next year for an extra $12,000 at this point. I don't have a problem with that.
But that comes out of this year's budget, not next year's budget.
It comes out of contingency this year, but we're also, I don't like the way it happened.
No, I don't either.
However.
I just have a question, Marty. And, and without looking at your budget stuff, and I can't remember from when I reviewed it, any of that $12,000, are you going to have any money left in your, in your fund at the end of the year?
It is possible. You know, I'll know a little more in the next couple of months. You know, I may have some left over in a couple of places. But I've had some extra things going on. I had to replace a defibrillator that was, got drowneded in a deputy's basement over the eight-inch rain, and that was a couple hun, or a couple thousand dollars. And, and so, it's, I've been looking at it to see where I could come pull, you know, maybe three or $4,000, I could, maybe.
So, I'd be, the health insurance premium makes no difference in this, because that's all next year's stuff. So, we're looking at this year's budget, and I'd be more comfortable, I think, in saying, you know, get the new car, and let's wait till the end of the year to decide where the $12,000 is coming from, whether it's going, how much is left in your budget that we can apply to the $12,000, and then using the rest for contingency. I don't know what the rest of you think.
A new one, you're saying, is around thirty-four?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at a new car would be around that $30,000, $31,000, $32,000. I think the insurance is going to give us $20,000. So, around that $32,000, I'm believing. So, about $12,000 I'm looking at.
Cash flow purposes, though, we'll get that $20,000 before the end of the year?
Yes, yes, yes. The check's supposed to be in the mail.
Exactly.
And that, that'll be a car, correct? A car. Right. Or not a pickup? No, I'm not going to get, no. I'll look for a Explorer, or a Charger, police package vehicle. Pickups are nice, but they also, gas is not the best in, in those either. Yep.
Well, I kind of agree with Commissioner Bartley on this aspect of it, too. It's not, you don't like the way it happened, but you're getting a new vehicle for, for $10,000 bucks or $12,000. And Commissioner Pierce brought up a good point, too. I think we need to see what the numbers come out at the end, and if we need to supplement, then we need to supplement. If we don't, we don't. But it's one of those things that's not, you can't plan for. It happens. It is, you just fix it and move on. So, that's what contingency's for. And I'd rather have, have a vehicle and a, a new one. As long as we're doing the process of every two or three years, we might as well update it to a new one and keep it going.
Okay. Well, thank you. I guess that's it, unless you have some questions.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a regularly scheduled agenda item at nine-thirty, our public hearing and approval of the fiscal year 2019 annual budget. Right.
Are changes coming up, or?
And Stacy, do you have something you want to say about that before we have any motions?
I sure, I can address the changes. They're in front of you on the screen. And Vicki, you can kind of jump in here, too, whenever you want. You'll notice as you go down, most of those changes are insurance changes due to, you know, when we, when we do the budgets back in May and June, we, we, we plan for a 15% increase with insurance costs, because we don't ha, we don't know. So, we kind of plan for the worst. And this year, we were able to get all of our insurance costs in for 2019 ahead of today's meeting. So, we were able to, Vicki and I were able to sit down last week and go through these. And we have to go through it department by department. So, overall, we're saving in the general fund. And some of it, you can see in the very first part, is the tax amount change. There were some changes to utilities and growth, very, very minor, $616. Actually, that was an increase. It's going to increase. That was the one thing, 600 bucks, wasn't too bad. And then the other thing was the enhanced 911, about two-thirds of the way down. You see that, you know, we had budgeted $140, and their request was a little bit lower than that. So, that was the other change. Otherwise, the rest is all of insurance changes. So, in the general fund, it's a savings of six, just over $68,000. And then you go down, that lists the rest of the road and bridge, insurance changes. There, in that, in that fund, about $6,700. Emergency management, just about $700. Sobriety, which is 24/7, $500 there. And then, current property tax amount, this is in the building fund, 301. The only change there was, we don't have any salaries taken out of that fund. That's why you don't see insurance changes there. That was the utilities and the growth again, and that was $12. So, not a big, not a big change, but it does have to be noted. And then, down at the very bottom, you can see our cash applied. So, we went from having cash applied of about $270,000 in the general fund, down to $198, 198.7. And you can see the rest of them there as well, all the savings there. Emergency management looks a little bit different. We're actually have a negative cash applied, which means we're trying to increase our fund balance in, in that fund. That's why it's a negative. That's actually a good thing. So, we're actually going to try to save even additional dollars with the cost of the insurance changes. So, and then the less, that less 5% in the general fund, that, that just changes, because that's just a percentage of our expenditures. We had, that ended up having to change a little bit as well. So, those are.
So, Stacy, when we look at Resolution 18-35, you already have the amendments in that. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, procedurally, what we need now is a motion to approve the amendments, and then I'll open the public hearing. So, these would be the amendments to the fiscal year 2019 provisional budget that Stacy just told us about. Would we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And at this time, I'm going to open our public hearing on our budget. Is there anyone that wants to speak to the budget? And, and the record should show, we really don't have anybody in the audience that's not a department head, so, okay. Then I'm going to close the public hearing at this time, and we'll move on to board and staff comments. Any questions from the commissioners on the motion to approve the amendment, the provisional budget?
I guess the other thing to note, too, is the levy went down just a little bit due to that, the utilities and the growth.
Yeah, it went down from 3.895 to 3.888.
In the general fund.
In the general fund. And the total levy went from 4.156 to 4.149. So, not a big change, but it did go in the right direction.
Any other staff comments at all? Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Then we'll do a roll call vote.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then next, we have Resolution 18-35, which reads, "Whereas SDCL 7-21-5 through 13 provides that the Board of County Commissioners so each year prepare a provisional budget of all contemplated expenditures and revenues of the county and all its institutions and agencies for such fiscal year. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners did prepare a provisional budget and cause the same to be published by law. And whereas due and legal notices been given to the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for the consideration of such provisional budget, and all charges, eliminations, and additions have been made thereto. Now therefore be it resolved that such provisional budget as amended, and all of its purposes, schedules, appropriations, amounts, estimates, and all matters set forth therein shall be approved and adopted as the annual budget of the appropriations and expenditures for Brookings County, South Dakota, and all of its institutions and agencies for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. And the same is hereby approved and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of Brookings, South Dakota, this 25th day of September, 2018. The annual budget so adopted is available for public inspection during normal business hours at the Office of the County Finance Officer, Brookings County, South Dakota. The accompanying taxes are levied by Brookings County for the year January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2019." County levies. Do I need to read that part, Stacy?
No.
Okay. So, would we have a, a motion to approve Resolution 18-35? So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank the staff for all the work they had to put into this, Stacy. And obviously, by this department, Vicki.
Anything else? We'll have a roll call vote.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Hey, good job, everybody. And we are going to, Vicki, you want to go next?
My department head report, I just summarized a lot of the things that were going on. It was kind of a busy two weeks. The pre-construction meeting for the rumble strips on Highway 77 project, which was a safety project. It moved so fast. We had the pre-construction meeting on September 5. And, and if you've noticed, the project is already completed. So, it didn't take them very long. Another item that came up was on September 6, when I did my weekly check of the culvert projects for the townships. Nothing had really changed. And if you noticed, on September 19, I went back, and two of the three projects were done. So, that's good to see them moving. The weather has not been very The weather has not been very advantageous for those types of projects and/or our road projects that we've got pending. The road inspection went good with Trevor with the wind tower project. He is basically just with the initial construction phase. He won't be with, when they do the wind towers themselves. All the sites that he had picked out were in acceptable positions and locations, and we look forward to that starting. One of the things that we're sure to get comments on are the widening of the radiuses on some of these approaches. People will be kind of amazed at how big they are. Once the project is done, and that would be sometime a year from now, we have the option to leave them as constructed, or we can make them, put them back. So it'll be a little bit of a time in there that we'll just have to decide whether they come out or stay. But it is going to be a significant increase in the, in the radius on some of these. Also, we started chip sealing on the 11th of September. We have not been able to do too much since then. On the 14th, we fog sealed 213. That's a little different approach. With the new mats and the construction of those roads, we felt it'd be a good possibility to try the quartzite chips and fog seal over the top. We had kind of, or I shouldn't say we, it was myself, had talked with LG Everest, and as you know, they contributed towards our 34th Avenue project. And I mentioned that when it come time to chip seal, we would really like to try the quartzite chips and a fog seal just to not only use their product, but to give people an idea of what's involved in doing that. I think it turned out real well, no broken windshields. One of the concerns, obviously, in that neighborhood is the truck traffic. And I, I think it packed in real well and encapsulated it to where I think the results will hopefully be seen for a long time. On the 12th of September, I talked with Brad Wormers about the water on 34th Avenue. Again, outside of doing a hydraulic study to see what our options may be, there isn't a whole lot with being in the wetlands that we can do. We looked at some old Google Maps from Clearback to 1990. There was not much change in the drainage there, other than that, you know, the, the flow of the water through that area just isn't finding its way. So he is willing to look at some possibilities. If, if we wanted to do hydraulic study to further, the thing that concerns me is, is we might come out with the same results that Midary Township got from their hydraulic study, was that there's really not a lot of remediation available to, to help that situation. But that's up to the board, what, what they would like to see further in that issue. Looked at some driveway approach sites on 459th, which are new construction. They went well. And then had the exit interview with Mike Scott, the mechanic. And I, I think he was happy for the opportunity to voice his, his ideas and, and what we should do in the future. Hopefully, it'll be something that, that we can initiate, because there, there is a lot of responsibility with that position. A lot of inventory, parts ordering, and stuff like that, that we need to refine and, and keep a grasp on. And then we went on to look at the, on the 18th of September, Jeff Anderson and I met with Colin and Doug from Banner and went over the deck overlay project. I don't know if any of the board members have had a chance to go out there and, and view that. Those are box beams that, that are made after they got the forms, but they made them in Mitchell and shipped them up here, and it went really quickly. If, if Holloway would have been about a week or two later when everything was on board, I think we could have replaced that project in probably one week, which is fantastic when you think of how time-consuming some of these projects can be. It won't be till later in November, if not December, that we'll see them come back and do the small boxes that are due to be done this year, but they hopefully will get done. I don't know why they wouldn't. With that box beam project, there are other sites that we're looking at. And again, at the end of October, beginning of November, we'll have the bridge reports back that might indicate some possibilities. But food for thought is, these, these box beams are easy to work with, and they, hopefully will do the job, and it'll also give some relief to that Southwest District that was kind of landlocked. Now they at least have a legal load route to get there. And now as we move forward with these other bridges, which I didn't hear back from State Department of Bidding, I, I'm anticipating that we'll still bid those 77 bridges in October, but I have not heard a definite answer on that. So when they do go through, it'll be a real good thing to follow up with. I think it's, it's, we're making some progress. It's just kind of like baby steps instead of the leaps we would like to in the right direction. The other thing that, that with our hiring process and stuff going on, we're just, we're working as hard, and I appreciate if the other departments would have a little patience with us, that we try to fit in what we can, when we can. It's going to be a little void here for a few times, but I, I think we'll get through it. I think we can put it together. And last but not least, I want to let you know, be the first to know, I'm going to be retiring at the end of 2018. I'll be moving on to greener pastures. I'll probably be Terry's campaign manager, if you need one. If you don't, I'll gladly just retire. But unless you want to win, then I, I think you might want to consider someone else. But I, I do appreciate the opportunity, and, and I wanted to, I still haven't finalized everything with the state, but I, I figure I want to give you plenty of time. I appreciate it, and hopefully you'll find three or four people that could fill in for me, don't you think, Terry? Bye. That's even better. All right, thank you. Unless you had questions, I should.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
All right.
Vicki.
Good morning. We started early voting last Friday, was the first day that we could do early voting. We've had 175 people either mail out their ballots to or come in. Out of that 175, 64 have been in the office in person and voted. So that is going good for the scale exercise that Bob had in Bruce. Jennifer from our office attended that, and I think that all went good. Met with Stacy a few times and worked on the adopted budget. Surplus sale, we put some more items back on, like we talked about at the last meeting. And I'm going to have Jenna just say kind of what, what happened with those. I think Habitat's going to pick up some things today, or this week anyway.
Yeah, so I just had a few items that didn't sell. And so some of those items are four desks, a veneer curio cabinet, a trophy case. And in my opinion, they're too nice to just go to the landfill. So I did reach out to the Habitat Restore, and they would be willing to pick up those items and, and use them. So I guess if I have consensus from the board, we'll go ahead and, and do that.
Thank you for your extra effort.
Did, did you get those blue lockers from the OAC on?
I think those are going to be going on the, in the, in the packet for the next meeting for you guys to approve, and then we'll take care of those at that time.
Yeah, and thanks Jenna for all her work on that. I think the surplus sale went very good. And in your packet was the auditors, finance auditors' report for August. And we have four be it noted items. The auditors' account with the treasurer, the payroll and additives total, the highway expenditure report, and the register of deed statement of fees collected. And also for the general fund surplus analysis for August, we had 25.18%, which is pretty much in line with what we've had for, for other years. A little higher than some years, a little lower than others, but right in line. So feeling good about that. Any questions on any of the reports that were in the finance officers?
I have a question, but I can't find my page, so I'm just going to tell you what I remember from when I read.
Okay.
There was one item that I think is in the highway department, in the 201 fund, where we had 336% more income than what we had anticipated. What, what's the deal with that? It was like $60,000, and we had, had budgeted quite a bit less, and I just didn't know what that was for.
Let's see if Stacy brings it up here. Sorry, it's miscellaneous revenue?
Yes. Where did, where did the rest of that money come from? I couldn't remember that.
I'm just trying to think to...
Sorry, I can find that out later. We don't need to take time on it now, but it was...
I can, I can get it for you even by the end of the meeting and let you know what that is.
That would be great.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
See, we have all of our department heads done, right? We're going to move on to regular business. And our first item is first reading of ordinance 2018-05. And the ordinance reads, "An ordinance authorizing rezoning of the north 528 feet, of the south 921 feet, of the west 445.5 feet, of the southwest quarter of Section 2, Township 111 North, range 48 West, of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota, Sherman Township, from an agricultural district to a commercial industrial district. Whereas Timothy Murphy made an application to the Brookings County Zoning Board to rezone the property from agricultural district to commercial industrial district. Whereas the Brookings County Zoning Board approved the application to rezone property on September 4th, 2018. Whereas SDCL 11-2-30 requires the Brookings County Commission to adopt or reject the change. Therefore be it ordained by Brookings County, South Dakota, that the following property be rezoned from agricultural district to a commercial industrial district. The north 520 feet, of the south 921 feet, of the west 445.5 feet, of the southwest quarter of Section 2, Township 111 North, range 48 West, of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota, Sherman Township." We will have the second reading on this matter on October 16th at 9:30 in the morning. Anything further regarding that matter? Then item number B is an action to approve Resolution 18-36, a plat of Lot 1 of Lake Ponset Substation addition in the southwest quarter of Section 18, Township 112 North, range 52 West, of the 5th PM, Brookings County, South Dakota. We have a motion on that.
Approval.
Second.
Mr. Hill?
Yes, the Planning and Zoning Board heard this plat on September 4th, passed it unanimously, and sent it to this board with the recommendation that you approve it.
Any questions or comments from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, action to approve Resolution 18-37, a plat of tract 1 of Bobcat addition in a portion of government slot 1 and 2, northwest 1 half, northeast 1 quarter of Section 6, Township 110 North, range 47 West, of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota.
So moved.
Mr. Hill?
The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this one on September 4th, passed it unanimously and sent it to this board with the recommendation of approval.
Any questions or comments by the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, action to approve Resolution 18-38, a plat of Lot 1 tailcam addition in the southwest quarter of Section 8, Township 110 North, range 49 West, of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota.
Move approval?
Second.
Mr. Hill?
Once again, Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission met September 4th, passed this plat unanimously, and sent it to this board with the recommendation of approval.
Any board comments or questions?
So this is in the joint jurisdiction? Is that right, this one is?
I don't have a map in front of me, but I would think it is. I believe it is.
So we explain the joint jurisdiction there, we have...
If it's the agricultural zoned area, we have the power to do the plats for the agricultural zoned areas. And this is, this is a place that has an established homestead, so they have the same rule in the joint jurisdiction that we do out in the county. Whereas if it's a previously established homestead, we can plat off less than 35 acres.
Okay. Even if, I'm just trying to figure out the, who has control of that stuff too, if it's zoned, because this is a residential use of there, and so we would still, even though it's an ag zoning, it's a residential use, we still have the ability to make a decision on that.
Because to do a building permit in this particular area, they would come through the county, and they'd have to pay the county, use the county nonconforming setbacks, versus if it was in the city joint jurisdiction area with an R, they have much tighter, they could, they could build more.
Gotcha. Okay.
Or have different setbacks, I guess is a better way of phrasing it.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, action to approve Resolution 18-39, a plat of Lot 1 tailcam addition in the northwest quarter of Section 17, Township 110 North, range 49 West, of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota.
Move approval?
Second.
Mr. Hill?
And Planning and Zoning Board heard this one on the September 4th meeting, and passed it unanimously, and sent it to this board with the recommendation of approval. And this is the, the same scenario as the previous plat, just established homestead where they're, in, in most cases on stuff like this, they take out the home, home area, and then the rest of the property is kept in ag production.
Any questions or comments by the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item F, action to approve Resolution 18-40, a resolution authorizing amendment to the agreement for use and restoration of haul roads between the County of Brookings and Coyote Bridge Wind LLC.
Motion approved.
Second.
Did you want to introduce this one, Bob?
This is, this is Mr. Burke one. I, I'll get the one right after this again.
Okay. Go ahead, Richard.
No, this is a acceptable change.
And I know Deputy State's Attorney Brightman worked on this issue. Terry, is there anything you want to say about it? Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Anybody have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item G, action to approve agreement eighteen dash ninety-four, an agreement between Brookings County and First District Association of Local Governments for the development of the pre-disaster mitigation plan.
Move approval.
Second.
This, this plan we brought to you a, a couple of months ago, but unfortunately, the, the, what we brought to you was the state agreement with the, with the Office of Emergency Management and the, and the FEMA folks. This is the actual first district agreement that allows them to do the actual contracting and submit the billing. Our portion of the, of the payment is going to be taken out of our first district dues, so... But they're doing the pre-disaster mitigation plan and they're coming down for all the meetings and they're facilitating all the meetings for it, and they would prepare the plan for us and give us a completed document after it's over.
Any comments or questions? All in, are we gonna do a roll call vote on this?
Johnson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number H, action to approve a request from the Brookings County Firefighters Association to spend twenty-two thousand from their reserve account for the purchase of a two thousand ten international eight thousand six hundred water tender for the city of Hendrix Fire Department.
Move approval.
Second.
Anything anyone would like to add on this?
I guess reasoning behind Hendrix, they do cover some of the properties in South Dakota around the lake up there. That's the reason they're requesting from the Brookings County Fire.
Stacy, would you like to just repeat what's in your staff report on, on this issue? Because I think we should have it on the record when we're voting on this.
Yeah, their request is twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, from the total of the, the total cost of the truck is thirty-three eight. They're requesting twenty-two. Um, this request comes from the Brookings Fire, Brookings County Fire Association. They keep track of that long-term fund that we hold, uh, for them. And they, they came, they keep track of which departments hold what portions of that, those long-term funds. And so, does that request actually came from that, the Brookings County Fire Association? This went through them first for their approval, so the request came directly from them. Um, the current balance of that fund is, uh, three hundred fifty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and some change, so...
Any other discussion? And we're going to do a roll call vote on that.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for two part-time membership assistants at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center.
Approval.
Second.
Figured in case you had questions, I'd just park myself down here in front again.
And I understand why we have one, because we had one personnel action notice. What's the other one?
Well, right now, I have all my part-time help air students. And so, even with everybody being students right now, I'm still covering weekend shifts because everybody might want the day off for a game, or something along those lines. Um, or somebody doesn't want to cover a five to nine. So, the reason for the second individual is just to make sure I have adequate coverage. Um, so if somebody does want, or every employee does want a day off, that there is people to be there. Um, I have, you know, a part-time person who only works eight hours a week, or I have a part-time person who only works six hours a week. So, I mean, it's not that we're going over by any means the nineteen hours a week, but just making sure I have enough people to be able to cover the hours. So, I'm not working, like, the last couple of weeks, um, a hundred and ten hours in two weeks, or things along those lines. Um, so just making sure I actually have coverage.
So, if those of you that are on the board could, could help me remember this, we talked about the number of part-time hours that we were going to fund in a year previously when we did budget stuff. Does this fit, the, the second membership position fit within those number of hours that we talked about and approved previously?
I believe, Chris, do you have those numbers, what, between the part-time, or how many hours were they covering?
We're not going over the hours. We're just making sure there's enough people there to cover the hours.
I think that's the, the situation is, is that we have, say, two or three of them that only want eight or ten. Well, then we need some more flexibility in there, that you get one maxed at nineteen, you can't call them. And now, you know, we don't have that ability to get, call another person, because we don't only have the three. So, if we had the five, we're still gonna use our number of hours. It's just that we can have some, have some people there to fill in if we need to, or, you know, if another person wants nineteen, to get to that number that we need, so...
So, we're still going to be within the number of hours we previously approved?
Correct.
It's just the staff to fulfill those hours.
Correct.
Anybody else have a question? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item J, action to appoint an alternate to the Brookings Economic Development Corporation Board.
Move approval.
Second.
And you might recall, I had mentioned this earlier in the year. I sit on BEDC board, and I have a couple of times been unable to attend the meetings. And, um, Al Hooton had suggested that we do something similar to what the city does in that we have an alternate, Mike's been going when I can't go, that we have an alternate that's approved to vote, so that we are able to vote when our, when somebody sits in on the meetings. The BEDC board already has done what they need to do to fix their bylaws, to make that okay. So, they were waiting for us now to, to approve that.
So, when Mike attended, was he not able to vote then?
Right. He wasn't able to vote, and there aren't all that many voting members on that board, so...
Well, I have it, yes. I've, I've got the sheet here, and they have Mike down as an alternate now. We just probably have to do it here to be able to do that. The, uh, the city has their representative and alternate, um, the chamber has an alternate, um, and stuff too. So, the number of, of voting members, there's twelve elected, and then there is, uh, seven appointed, so there's thirteen. And so, total members, and, uh, yeah, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have an alternate and stuff too. I guess, I don't know if we need to make a motion to have Mike be the alternate, or just a, is that just more of a consensus, or, I don't know?
I, I would suggest that maybe we, we, um... amend this motion to make, to do what we said we're going to do and to make that be Mike for the rest of two thousand eighteen. And then when we address board assignments in January, then we'll add that on as one of the categories that we appoint. Would that be acceptable? Would somebody like to make a...
I'll make an amendment that we, uh, put Mike, Commissioner Bartley, excuse me, uh, as the alternate to, uh, Commissioner Pierce at the BEDC meeting.
Is that acceptable with you?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And then, is there anything further to discuss on the main motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And I don't know if we need to, um, you know, take a look at the rest of our appointments throughout the area there for, you know, alternates or not. I mean, we're on the hospital board, we're ex-official, so it's, you know, anybody can kind of come and...
Right.
...go on stuff too, but anytime we're a voting member, I think we should probably look at some alternates, uh, there in case people can't make.
The problem with that, though, is the bylaws of the organization don't always allow that, so...
But I think we should have a conversation with them too, and see if, you know, if they don't. If they don't want to change it, then we won't, but I think that conversation we had, that way, I mean, to get a quorum, you know?
Exactly.
That's, they have problems, yeah.
So, if we can, we're gonna be gone and not contribute to the, I mean, I look at data a little bit, too.
Yep.
We've, you know, we don't have an alternate there, and if I'm not able to make it, then you're the quorum. The same way Growth Partnership wasn't able to get a quorum the other day, uh, I wasn't able to make the type of thing, so... And those are voting, voting spots, and so...
And Stacy, would you be able to send an email to Al Hooton telling him that we did all this? And I'm sorry that Bob just walked out, because I think, and it would require an amendment to the bylaws for planning and zoning. I really do think that would be very helpful on planning and zoning for whoever our liaison is, to have an alternate that could vote, because we do have a problem getting a quorum. And, and if the commissioner that's assigned has a conflict or is ill, sometimes we need that person twice, maybe in the last twelve months. We haven't been able to do things because we didn't have a quorum, so... So, planning and zoning would be one of the things we should look at as we move down the road on that. Stacy, would you like to move forward with the Commission Department Director Report?
Did we need to do the roll call or the voice vote on the main motion, though, on that?
Oh, I thought we did that, okay.
Did we, Jenna?
We did the amendment.
We did the amendment. Did we do the main motion?
We did.
Okay, okay, good.
We did it without a motion.
Get State's attorneys to...
Oh, we did it.
No, we had a motion.
You did it on the amendment and the main motion is amended?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
We did.
We're gonna do State's attorney.
Thank you, Jenna.
What's that?
State's attorney first. No, that's right, sorry.
So, my report was included in your packet. Uh, Fall Convention was out in Pier a couple of weeks ago. I kind of listed out the different sessions that I attended. One that I found very interesting was, uh, Stephen Campbell gave a presentation on law enforcement risk management. I think he ended up going out to the Law Enforcement Center and speaking to, um, I think you, we had a couple of our deputies go and attend a session by him later that same day out in Pier, but I don't know if any of you sat in on that, where he spoke about, uh, just kind of risk management in jails and some of the experiences that he has, some of the things he has seen happen. Very, very interesting, um, to have that protocol in place and to follow it, follow it through. Um, legislative updates, of course, and, and budget issues with Rod is, it's always good. And then, some things on running an effective meeting with Todd and Luke from First District on the next day. So, a very good conference overall. I have reached out to Chris at the association and gave her a couple of ideas that I had for work session topics. You know, this time it seemed like things were geared very much towards the different officials and for the highway superintendents that were there. And there were, weren't, there were several, but not many geared specifically for commissioners. Uh, and I think as a, especially, um, next year after, you know, with the potential of having new commissioners on board after elections this fall, it would be good to have, um, some different sessions geared specifically towards, towards commissioners, rather than the commissioners trying to fill in kind of where the officials, and the officials different meetings. So, um, shared some of my thoughts with Chris following the meeting. Next Thursday, October fourth, is the Health Fair, uh, the Wellness and Health Fair that will be held here in this room and all, all over upstairs, uh, next Thursday. And over, uh, the past several years, the board has always given a consensus to, uh, allow employees to get up to a hundred dollars in, uh, pay for if they take part in the Health Fair and do the blood screening, and then depending on what those results come back as, kind of as an incentive pay to stay, to stay healthy. You get so much, and there's kind of a point system that we use, so much for participating, so much for, you know, your blood pressure being at a certain level and whatnot. So, I guess I'm looking for consensus again from the board, if you're willing to do that for employees.
What did we spend on that last year?
I, I don't know if Kristen could pull, pull that up. It's all run through payroll. I mean, it's up to a hundred dollars per employee, but we don't have, not everyone participates in it, and then not everyone gets the full hundred dollars, so...
I can check and see if she can...
See if she can...
Yep.
Do that. I mean, it comes out of each department's individual budget. It's part of just salaries. It's paid, gone, it's paid out through payroll, so...
So, if everyone participates, slightly over ten thousand dollars, is that what we're talking about?
If everybody were to participate and everybody were to get all of the hundred thousand, yeah, or a hundred thousand, that would be nice. Let's do that. Hundred dollars. And yes, it would be approximately that, but I think we have, I think we have maybe half of our employees participate. It's, you know, doing the blood draw and doing the blood pressure screening, and some of them just don't want to go through that, so... On average, we have maybe about half, give or take, of our, of employees take part in it.
It's money well spent, because it helps us in our insurance, so I think it's, it's a nice incentive.
We've done it for a number of years now, a handful of years, I suppose. Started, gosh, probably in, I think once we moved to this building, actually, since two thousand twelve, we've been doing it. So, and having the Health Fair, so... Do I have a majority, yes?
How many employees do we get that actually participate?
About half, forty to fifty. Okay. We do have a candidate forum coming up this Saturday, or, yeah, this coming Saturday? No, in two Saturdays from now. Uh, the districts have in-house and senate candidates, along with our county-states attorneys candidates. We'll have that candidate forum, uh, here in this room on Saturday, October sixth, that starts at eight-thirty. The commission has been invited to attend a groundbreaking for the Raven Precision Agriculture Center. Uh, that's on Saturday, the sixth as well, that's at one-thirty in the afternoon. That's going to be held just south of the Animal Science Complex on campus. Uh, that's at the corner of Madera and North Campus Drive, just kind of across the road to the east of the horse, uh, the horse unit there, just on Madera, as you're heading kind of out towards the bypass, right on the very edge of campus, the big Animal Science Arena there is right on your right. So, on the very northwest corner of campus. The department head review process is underway. Self, department heads, just a reminder, your self-evaluations are due today, uh, to us, to Laura. Each of the commissioners in front of you has a manila envelope with hard copies to fill out for each individual appointed department head, the forms. They're due back to HR in some format, whether you write them out. If you want me to, please talk to me if you want me to send those to you in, like, a Word document, so you can fill them out online. Otherwise, you have hard copies in those envelopes for each individual, uh, department head. And then one copy of kind of the, the different, what the different, uh, rules are for how to, what everything kind of means. But if you want to fill those out, let me know. I can send that out to you in a Word, um, version as well, if you'd rather fill it out on the computer, but otherwise you have hard copies. And those are due back to the HR office, office by Friday, October nineteenth, at five o'clock. Um, and then we'll work on compiling all those comments and create one document to be used at the reviews on Tuesday, October thirtieth. Uh, for my review, you should hand those in. As we've done in the past, what you do is you give your reviews to the chair, and then the chair compiles that information to bring to. So, uh, for me, you'll give that to Commissioner Pierce, so... Um, one thing I'd like to discuss, we started, we, we discussed on that thirtieth, starting at eight-thirty. I'd recommend giving yourselves about fifteen, twenty minutes to kind of discuss what, how you want to do the review process. I always think there's kind of a, a time that you need to sit down as a group and decide how you want to do that. Who wants to ask the questions, how you kind of want to proceed. So, if you start at, um, eight-thirty, you'll be done by, you know, if everything goes in half-hour increments and you stay on schedule, it'll be about twelve-thirty when you wrap up. If you want to start at eight and go through that, you know, fifteen, twenty minute review process, we could start, and then we could be done closer to that noon time if we stick to, stick to the schedule. So, I guess I'm looking for direction from you as to what time you would like to start. It's Tuesday, October thirtieth, and there's seven, seven different reviews that you'll be doing.
So, do you want to start at eight-thirty, or?
No, I think let's start at eight. Because that gives us, that gives us time to figure out how we're gonna do it, and I, I think...
We start at eight and then start the reviews?
At eight-thirty.
Do you remember last year, did we take a full half hour for each one?
Well, some were more, some were less.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah.
So, start at eight, everybody's in agreement with that?
Yep.
I would think that if anybody has a format change from what we had last year, it would be prudent to send that to everybody so you could review that format, requested format change. I mean, if we meet at 8 o'clock and we try and hash out what the format is, I would like to have some suggestions to change if there is one ahead of time.
This is the format, correct?
Or is this the format right now?
No, I guess what I'm talking about is how you want to handle when that person sits down and is in front of you. How, how you want to deliver the evaluation to them, I guess. That's, that's what I want to talk about. The form is done. It's in front of you. That's in your envelopes and what you're going to fill out. But if you want to discuss, you know, like who's going to go over it? Is it, is it the liaison for each of those given departments? Is it the Chair that goes through all of that? I, I don't know. That's, that's what I'm talking about, you know, how, giving you those, that time to go through that.
Stacy, say again when we're supposed to have them back to your office or to Laura.
Friday, October 19th by 5 o'clock. And then mine go to Commissioner Pierce.
I, I just want to say, because I'd like everybody to think about it as we're working on doing these. I didn't like how we did the evaluations last year. I thought it was a miserable experience.
It was.
And I think that was really our fault. And that if we took the time and did the evaluations and got our paperwork in on time, that things would flow smoother. So I'm asking everybody to honor that deadline, if you would, and, and to take seriously. Because, you know, we have great staff and we have good ideas and we combine all that into an evaluation and, and, and we want to be sure that, that we've put our work into the process.
Amen.
So, and again, if you want these, that form in a Word document so you can type into it.
I do.
You do? Mike does?
I do.
Stephanie, Ryan, do you want? Larry, do I? I could just send it to all of you. I'll just do that. I'll send it to all of you, but then you have the hard copies and then you'll have the word that you can just type in yourselves too and.
I like having the hard copy.
Save it and then email it to, to Laura or you could print it out and bring it in. You know, emailing it would be helpful. Then we could, it's easier for us to copy and paste if you email it in. But if you don't, if you want to write it out, that is completely fine. We'll just, just retype, so. Okay. And then we'll plan on meeting at 8:00 AM on October 30th to do those evaluations. And again, for the Department Heads that are here, those are due today. So dicks will be a formality. So, and just a reminder, our next Commission meeting is right away again next Tuesday. We had an extra week off due to convention and getting the budget stuff prepped and now we're going to get back onto that first and third Tuesday schedule again here for October, so we're going to meet right away. That being said, the meeting next week should be relatively short. There probably won't be a whole lot on there, but. And then the other thing too is we are sending out the advertisement to, for board appointments. Today it went out, so we have a number of board appointments that will be filled for various boards. I could bring that. I could show you. Give me just a second. You got it? Let's see. I won't, that, come on. Well, let's see here.
It was right there.
Yep, that was there.
Was it there now?
Right there.
Oh, right here. So there they are. We have 4H Promotion and Expansion, two positions there. Brookings Health System Board, and I know they did some changes to their ordinance and we'll be, I'll be in touch with them. I know they wanted to know when we were opening that and whatnot, so I'll be in touch with them today. Extension Board is just an annual appointment, so that's done every year, all six positions. First District Planning Board, that's currently Commissioner Bartley, so. Housing and Redevelopment has one position. Planning and Zoning has two. And you can see the little asterisks and then it talks about the different districts, Districts 1 and 3. And then Weed and Pest Board, we have one position there. Just so you know too, we do send out application forms. We contact all incumbents and we do send them the application form at the same time that this goes out, so they'll all be getting the form that they need to fill out, so.
Just a, a couple of comments on, on our process. I think Mike is our current person in Housing and Redevelopment Commission. And I think the statute says the only person that you can't have on there is your welfare person. And I just, when I was reading the statute, I just think that's something we need to look at and I might be wrong on that. I'm just saying, maybe Stacy, you could take a peek and make sure that, that that qualifies under the, under the statute for him to be our, our appointment on there. There was something in the statute that made me think we weren't doing that right.
Yeah, and we'd, we'd kind of done some looking into that earlier and we found some differing opinions on whether that is indeed the case, that he would have to be removed. So I, I know Michelle was kind of doing some research on that for me too and we can go back and take a look at that.
Excellent.
Upcoming dates that we had below, again, as I'd mentioned, next Thursday, the 4th, is our Wellness Fair. And if you haven't yet signed up, you can sign up to stop in and see Michelle and sign up to get your flu shot. And then also if you, if you as individuals want to come in and do the health screening too with the blood draw and the blood pressure check, you're more than welcome to do that. And there's really not a sign time for those. But those will be going on during that 7 to 10:30 time here. I mentioned the Candidate Forum and the Groundbreaking. We have another holiday coming up. Native American Day is on Monday, the 8th, so offices will be closed. A Hobo Day Parade. Do you want me, once again, to go get candy for you folks? In the past, what you've done is each given me some money and I go and buy candy so you guys can have candy to throw out. Want to do that? Okay.
I was asked by the whole committee to provide a convertible, so I'll be driving that if we want to walk along. I can have all the candy in the backseat for anybody. If anybody thinks they want to sit on the back and wave, they can do that.
I'm going to do that.
My, my knee probably won't allow me to walk the entire parade this year, so I'll drive the car. You could be the queen if you'd like.
I will. Work on my way.
Elbow, elbow, wrist, wrist, wrist.
Wave or the, you know, there's all kinds of different waves, but, no. No trailer.
No trailers. So do you, I'll, but yeah, if you guys want to decide how much you want to give me and I'll go buy some candy for you.
I think it's been 20 bucks each, hasn't it?
I, I think so. Once again, kind of looking further into October, we have the Business Expo where we, that's out at SwifTeau where we set up a county table out there and, and participate in that event. We are scheduled to have a table out there once again and that's on Thursday, October 18th, from 5 to 7 out at SwifTeau Center. And then I noted on my, on my report that your Department Head Evaluations are due on the 19th, so y'all have that written down. And then on the 30th, we will have that Special Commission Meeting, that exec session for the Department Head Reviews. It says 8:30, but it'll be, will start at 8:00 AM and then with the first interview to start at 8:30. That's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Stacy? State's Attorney's Report.
As Marty alluded to, we are starting a crisis intervention training. I'm heading up as the Chair and we will be offering classes to law enforcement officers from the Sheriff's Office and the Brookings Police Department and the University Police Department, starting November 5th. So we will actually have some ways to de-escalate situations dealing with individuals who are calling in for a mental health crisis. So we're pretty excited about that and our small group team has got it on the board and we're actually doing it. So it's kind of nice being on a committee that's pretty proactive and we're going to have classes. So there will be Mondays for six weeks due to staffing issues. Previously, we have to send people to Sioux Falls, Marty, and it would be a week. So this is a way to have the training in town and still have enough people go through. So our plan is to do a training every quarter. And then I'm working with the UJS system to start a program that is, it's been in a few states right now. It's called Hope Court and Marty's working with that as well, with the jail. And what it is, is a hybrid of regular probation and drug court. For those who are low to medium risk, they don't qualify for drug court, but they have a history where they need maybe a little bit more supervision. So it'd be a little more high intensity supervision, probation and more random tests. So to sign up for that program, if they complete it, they could get that removed from their record. So it's just a little bit of a way to combat the drug addiction that we're seeing in the county. Kind of instead of, instead of size the defendant to work hard enough to get this removed from his record if he, if he or she completes the program. So they're just not quite high risk, high need. But if we can get in there and get them a little bit more supervision, we can keep them from cycling into that drug use to, so that they become high, high risk, high need. So those are just two things that are going on in the office. Obviously, I'm not Steve. Steve is not going to be attending County Commission anymore. And I, for the first time since July 16th, 2016, did not go to court yesterday. And I did have the shakes. I didn't know what was going on. I had a little bit of withdrawals and almost snuck over there to see what was going on, but no, it was fine. I was at my desk on a Monday. It was weird, but anyway, so things are clicking and going well, so.
I, I just have a quick question. The new deputy that we approved the salary change for, is she going to be handling juveniles or is she handling mag? What's she doing?
She's doing juveniles and ANNs.
Welcome back.
Okay. Any questions for Terry? Commission reports. Commissioner Jensen?
On 11th, attended the State Convention out in Pier. It was kind of short, but some good information. Commissioner Pierce and myself attended a presentation by Nathan Moore with the Corps of Engineers and it was interesting to learn when you're doing work within the wetlands, when the core needs to be contacted. It kind of depended on the acres involved or the lineal feet within the waterway. Sometimes it requires them to come out and visit the site. Sometimes it didn't, but it was a pretty good presentation. That evening, we had a good, I guess, skit done by one of our fellow Commissioners. Applaud them for their efforts and it, it's kind of fun to see that. It was very interesting. On the 20th, I attended Aurora Fireman's Feed, Appreciation Over There. Few departments there, some from Moody County, Flandre area and Elkton and those. So last night, we had the OAC meeting. It was kind of short too, but like I said, Kristin gave us a report of everything going on out there, so that's all I have.
Mr. Miller?
Due to the fact that I am on the Board of Directors of the State Association of County Commissioners, I had to go to convention on September 9th and we had a meeting and we went through the resolutions and policy statements. And then we went over to Fort Pier and got on the paddle boat and went on a paddle boat tour. And if any of you get a chance to do that next summer, I would highly recommend it. It was very informative. He, the captain, had lots of good information. It was interesting how the paddle boat got there in the first place. And it was, it was relaxing. It happened to be a beautiful evening and I would really highly recommend that you take the opportunity if you get a chance. The convention was interesting and I really think that the whole Board of Directors should have won our skit. However, you know, that's how it went.
Level.
September 12th, I attended a domestic abuse budget meeting. And the 14th, I went to John's retirement party, which was very nice. And September 17th, I had a meeting with Stacy and a reporter from the SDSU Collegiate regarding the process that we have gone through with jail expansion. And I would like to, to give kudos to this young man because it sounds like he is going to be actively involved in what's going on in the county and the city to report in the Collegiate, to kind of bring that group into a cohesive, knowledgeable group. Everybody knows what everybody else is doing. And so it was, it was a nice, nice interview that we had and that's all I have.
Commissioner Krogman?
Yes, September 5th, had a working lunch meeting with Beta. We met with TSP, architecture firm that designed the, the transportation garage that is out in Spearfish. And so they gave us to try to get some numbers, tried to give us a facility. We didn't copy it, but just kind of go off of their space that we would need and just had, started that discussion. And they're going to do some, some ideas of some potential costs that we'd be looking for if we had a facility similar to that and that kind of thing. So it's kind of the first step for us to, working towards a spot and if it's new construction or if it's existing, all that kind of stuff. So, and also coming up with some costs of a potential there. So then maybe we can start up that conversation with other entities that might be interested in partnering, so. It was a good meeting. Took, we were there about two hours, so it wasn't too bad. It's got a lot of stuff covered there too. That evening, went out to the Dectronics 50 Year Open House. That was really well attended and they had a nice setup there, a lot of nice tours. And then on the 10th, I was, before I went out to the meetings that morning out in Pier for our SDAA ACC meetings, I sat in a meeting here at City Hall with the City of Brookings, they had a developers, development meeting of a, of a process. They're going to change, not change, but a way to get the process started for plating and zoning and different stuff like that. They have a, every morning on Thursdays, they, every Thursday morning, excuse me, they meet with a person of the City Utilities, the zoning office, the planning development officers, the city manager and they communicate about moving forward and what's going on and planning. And so they invited that if anybody has an idea or a development idea, that they could meet with them first in confidentiality and talk through the process. And so if there's hurdles that could happen with utilities or with expansion or any of that type of stuff, they can maybe work through those rather than just throwing the plat right in front of the zoning people right away and then all of a sudden going down in flames because they never thought of this. And so I was there, brought up what about joint jurisdiction, what would happen if there is something in that? And in that time, they would then bring in our, communicate with our zoning to make sure they're aware of it and get into that there. But yeah, so it was interesting, something that there's new that they're going to plan. I think Lucina Paul, the city manager, has done this in the past and wanted to implement that here. So if, if something happens in that joint jurisdiction area, there is a piece of property that's going up for auction that I talked to Mr. Hill about that is in the county, but it's zoned R, in our joint jurisdiction. And so that would go through the city for development of that piece of property. It's less than 35 acres, but that rule, my understanding, does not apply because it is zoned R from the city and the city will do that. So that stuff will come up. And so when some, maybe that developer that buys it wants to do something, we'll have, hopefully, sit in those meetings and keep that conversation going. So anyway, went to that and then drove out to Pier and was at the meetings there on the 10th and the 11th. Then on the 19th, sat in the BDC meeting there and main discussion. And main discussion was the Communities of Excellence update. And the Community of Excellence is, is a project that Baldridge is, is, we're one of nine communities that will be taking place in this. And it's a pretty big commitment over the next few years. And the organizations that will be involved or have representatives, BDC, CVB, the Chamber, the EBBI, City of Brookings, Brookings Health, Brookings Utilities, Brookings School Board, South Dakota State University, Brookings County, City of Volga and City of Arlington, will all take place in this, the Communities of Excellence. And they're going to help us continue to improve and we'll have a spot at that table. I mean, you probably know more about us having been involved in there. I think they're looking out of a commitment from Brookings County to participate in these meetings and, and participate in, you know, the community objectives and all that kind of stuff, so.
And there's been a slew of emails that have come out in the last few days as relates to upcoming programming and training and, and stuff on the Communities of Excellence. I'm hoping that we can put that on our agenda for next Tuesday. I'm going to forward those to you, Stacy. I didn't get that done yesterday. But there, I want to say it's November 13th, but my date might be wrong, that they're doing a full day program here in Brookings and there's some expense for it and whether we want to have some of our staff go. There are some things that we need to discuss and, and maybe we could put that on the agenda for Tuesday.
So anyway, that will be an interesting outcome on there and stuff. And so I think we're going to need to have some, it's up to us, I guess, but they're expecting us to have somebody that will participate in bimonthly meetings or monthly meetings depending on there with this Baldridge group on, on moving community profile and stuff like that, so. But we can work that out. But otherwise, I think that's it.
Commissioner Bartley?
Mine will be somewhat short. 10th, 11th, I did attend the state meeting with everybody else. And I think that they've covered a lot of them. The risk management one to me was, was very enlightening when you refers to the jail system and obviously we operate the jail system in our county. And there was a lot of good information, things that I hadn't thought about. Basically treating inmates as, as human beings was a very important part of it and, and not just as inmates. And I, I thought that was enlightening because there's certain, certain liabilities if you don't treat people properly in jail. Monitoring their systems, getting the help they needed, if they need medical help. Things that they pointed out that, that I hadn't thought of that was pretty important to. I'm sure Marty looks at risk management all the time with his staff. I'm sure that he has a program in place for that. But it was, it was an enlightening program. Then I was, was gone with an unfortunate death in the family of the brother-in-law we lost last week, so I was gone most of the week. So I don't have anything else to report at this point in time.
Thank you. I too attended the SDACC meeting in Pier on September 10th and 11th. And as Commissioner Jensen indicated, went to that Corps of Engineers training on filling out the 404 application. It was interesting. And, and hopefully that'll help us as some of that information will pass through as, as we're working through that process. When I was walking around talking to vendors, I talked to the South Dakota Investment Group that is a South Dakota governmental entity agency that does investments for counties and cities and whatever. And I think we should invite them to come do a presentation. I'd just like to know the numbers. They talked a little bit about this. They said that they get a better return than the local banks statewide. And it'd be, I'm not saying we should switch anything, I'm saying we should investigate our options. And if you get an extra $10,000, $20,000 a year off of your interest income, that could go into some things that we want. And I think I gave that information to Stacy and I'm going to ask her to reach out and, and maybe get them, and I gave them information also. And they said they'd come, they'd talk to us, talk about it. Maybe it's something we're interested in, maybe it's not, but at least we should look at it because other counties and cities are doing that in the state of South Dakota. And you don't have to do all of one thing. You, you can do some of that and some of this and, so it'd be interesting. And I did the tour on the museum because the shiple office is at the museum and took that opportunity to meet the people that we're working with from Historic Preservation. And everybody was very pleasant and that was nice. On September 13th, I went to the PPCC POD meeting. And I'm not sure that Bob said this, but he might have and I just missed it. Right now, there's a POD exercise planned at SDSU for October 30th. And there will be, the, and that's, POD is the point of dispersion. Am I saying that right, Bob? For inoculations in case you have an emergency on inoculations. Anyway, they're going to be giving around 800 flu vaccinations to SDSU students, but that's to see how our POD program is set up, whether we could mobilize and do the things. It'll be interesting if anybody wants to go to that and there's a lot of work going into planning that. On Saturday, September 22nd, I attended the Book Festival and that's not really a commission thing, but I just wanted to ask Stacy, some of those meetings were here in, in our building. Was there any feedback that came out of that? Everything go well or? I was just curious on that. And I went to the Full Scale Emergency Exercise in Bruce and our people did a great job. Everything went smooth and, and that was good. And then the last thing that I wanted to ask you all about, we're getting close to the end of the year. We'll be doing some things with our union negotiations starting next year. And we had talked about taking a closer look at our health insurance stuff. And Commissioner Krogman has indicated that he'd be willing to be on a subcommittee and I would volunteer to be on a subcommittee just to do, take a closer look at that, see what we're doing, see how our programs compare with other county programs. If there's anything we can do to reduce our costs and keep our benefits, those kinds of things. Would you all be willing for us to do that? Is that acceptable? And then we'll report back to the commission.
You said now, you, union negotiations, what that had to do with?
Well, health insurance is part of our union negotiations, what we do with our health insurance. That okay with everyone? We'll start working on that. We'll come back, we'll give you a report, see if we have any recommendations and then we should be ready to go when we move into that next process next year. Okay? And that's all that I had to report. Anybody have anything else?
I did find out for you, Commissioner Pierce, what the miscellaneous revenue was. That is all interest income and it was more than what we had budgeted because the interest has been going up. And how that's divided, it's divided on a monthly basis for all CDs, all of our money markets and our checking accounts are all divided according to how much is in that fund. So like if the highway fund goes down, then the interest would go down. But that is how it's divided, is how much is in the fund.
So it gets divided up between the funds?
Between the funds, yes.
Becomes part of the departmental budget in revenues for that?
Yes, it does. And we did increase the revenue next year, but probably not enough the way the interest rates have been going, which is a good thing, so.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Will be adjourned.